Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Al Hogan, he's not feeling well this morning, so he called in sick this morning, so we're going to have to get through this meeting without him. Any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Reeve, Administration has one addition that would go under it would go under 9.3 Planning and Community Services is 9.3.3 for Knusu Ridge Phase One Trail Development Project Report Update.
I think we'll have a personal closed session with council at the end. 12.1.
So sorry, that's under Personnel?
Yeah, Personnel, yeah, thank you. Any other additions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the amended agenda. Thank you, Counselor Swagger, for making that motion. Any discussion on this? I'm seeing none. I'll call for the vote, please. Looking for the adoption of the minutes of regular meeting September 10, 2024. Thank you Deputy Reeve Crick for making that motion. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's a pretty nice ringer, by the way. Did that carry? Oh, just waiting. That carried, thank you. I'm looking also for the committee meeting September 17, 2024. Thank you, Counselor Swagger, for making that motion. Any discussion on this? I'm seeing none. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Okay, we're going to go to 6.1.
Morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
I'm here with policy number 4A.008, Clearing of Undeveloped Road Allowance Policy Amendment. At the regular meeting of council on August 27, 2024, council made a motion to have policy 4A.008, Clearing of Undeveloped Road Allowance, brought back to the committee of the whole for review. This policy was presented to the committee of the whole on September 17, 2024, with the committee recommending that council approve the policy as presented. Attached as Appendix A is policy 4A.008, Clearing of Undeveloped Road Allowance as Policy, as presented to the committee of the whole on April 16, 2024, and September 17, 2024. Council questioned the age of this policy and when changes were made. Attached as Appendix B is the original policy from May 1998 and the revision from November 12, or November 2012. Both policies contain the same information as the current policy. The purpose was always to preserve the road allowances in their natural state except for the purpose of road construction. Since the policy had been adopted in 1998, the person requesting the improvement to the road allowances has been responsible for the costs associated with the improvement. Administration cleared up some ambiguity in the wording to make the proposed amended policy clearer for implementation. There are no impacts to the budget with this policy, and communication will be via the public website, the MD website, and it's administration's recommendation that council adopts policy number C-4A.008, Clearing of Undeveloped Road Allowance Policy, as recommended by the committee of the whole.
Thank you. Looking for a motion or discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. You said that we have a separate road construction policy that talks about construction of developed and undeveloped road allowances?
Through the Reeve to Counsel Kryvjak, that is correct, yes. The road construction policy talks about how we will build roads in the municipality, and then if nothing is budgeted, that can always come back to council for approval at the time.
So then why do we have number eight there, that the person has to develop the road allowance, undeveloped road allowance?
Through the Reeve to Counsel Kryvjak, as talked about in the last, at the committee meeting, in the event that the council doesn't approve building a road, number eight gives the opportunity for somebody to come and build a road at their cost. That's what this entails, is that if council doesn't agree with a road allowance being developed, and let's say a farmer, or industry, or somebody wants to develop that road allowance, number eight allows that road allowance to be done, if council approves, at the cost of the developer, not the cost of the MD. If we remove number eight, there would be no opportunity for anybody to develop a road allowance if council doesn't approve developing it themselves.
But doesn't this policy refer to people and not to industry?
Through the Reeve, this, the person means any individual or company, I guess, would be, I don't know if there's a distinction in the policy that a person is different than industry.
Okay, yeah, my concerns, okay, thank you.
Just looking for a motion or more comments?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt the policy as presented.
All right, thank you Deputy Reeve Crick for this motion that council adopts amending policy number C-4A.008, Clearing of Undeveloped Road Allowance Policy, as recommended by committee of the whole. Any other discussion on this motion, gentlemen? I'm seeing none. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you, council.
We have Mr. Scott here today. Are you time sensitive today? You're not too bad?
I'm actually.
All right, so we're getting him at 3:00 then, so.
You're buying lunch.
You said Paulette, you're buying lunch today? Thanks, Paulette.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
Are you, you're able to follow through on this report on your terminal there?
Should be able to, yeah.
Just making sure, I'm not sure where we are with the technology upgrades that we've got going on.
Everybody's got it? Looks good, yep.
All right, thank you. This year, the emergency management department began a review of all subdivisions or area clusters where ratepayers reside within the MD. The purpose of this review was to assess the egress potential for the area in question and provide information on what mitigation strategies, excuse me, could be used to lessen the threat to our residents and to their property. Following this review, a report was generated which identified four locations that were considered problematic should an urgent full-scale evacuation be necessary. These areas have been termed Crane Lake West, Moose Lake North, Myria Lake, and the Moose Lake Peninsula. This review brought attention to other areas within the MD, but those areas were not considered as problematic and will not form part of this report. Rather, they will be compiled in a secondary report to be generated later, once these more pressing locations have been presented to council. While assessing the egress threat posed by these locations, the following criteria were used, so population density being one, proximity to a risk source being the other, and finally, the egress potential currently in place for the location. Although this report was prepared with an all-hazards focus in mind, it could be assumed that the most likely scenario requiring a full-scale evacuation could be an approaching wildfire. Additionally, there are many mitigation strategies that could be considered, including structural mitigation such as road construction, road improvements, brush clearing, or signage, as well as non-structural mitigation, which could include the sharing of information with ratepayers, training, planning, and developmental strategies, or other procedural or educational measures. Most of all, these strategies could be employed in most or all of these locations to some extent. Administration is presenting this report to council for information only as we enter budget discussions for 2025 and beyond. This ties in with goal number two of our strategic plan, enhancing safety in the community. In terms of cost, this report was prepared with a very high-level cost evaluation in mind. Many of the strategies presented would involve significant financial investment, and without the benefit of technical testing, such as earthworks, soil testing, moisture levels, et cetera, our infrastructure services department has provided only basic cost estimates. A more fulsome cost evaluation, including technical testing, would be needed should council wish to proceed with any significant structural strategies such as road building. And this report is being presented to council for information only at this time.
Yes, Counsel Faddeh.
Good morning, thanks. Yeah, when I was reading through this last night, just one community that kind of popped into my mind was Murray Lake. And I don't know why that wasn't taken into consideration, and I'm sure you're about to tell me, because it's one way in, one way out. It is in the green line, or certainly, there's a lot of trees there, and it's, I think it's protected by the province as far as the trees go. And I'm just, yeah, I'm just, when I seen that, I didn't see this, and it just popped in my head, and you tell me.
Thank you for the question, Counsel Faddeh. Murray Lake is definitely one that we spent some time in. We, I agree, I think that Murray Lake has, there's lots of foliage, lots of overgrown bush there as well. The problem that we have with Murray Lake is that we've done what we can in terms of free out and bush clearing as far as the MD is concerned with our particular land. We'd need to then segue into engaging with the public and the ratepayers, people that live in that area, about how they can look after their own private property as well, and maybe try to instill some of those fire smart principles. It's always such a challenge, because it is a beautiful little area, it's got lots of privacy, and people tend to like those features in a property, but I agree that it is problematic. We simply don't have much more that we can do there as an MD. We have to rely on the residents to look after their own property.
Yeah, okay, thanks, because thinking egress, you know, how can that, because I know further north, you, it's not, it's not an option, they only have, sorry, north. I guess west, that's north?
Where is that?
Going towards the campground, that's north.
That's west.
That's west.
Yeah.
So the only way out is east for them, so, okay, thanks.
And as I said, sorry, through Counsel Faddeh to council, there are others, other locations, these are just the more critical ones that we've, that sort of circulated to the surface.
Does it have to do with population, too, and a dense population in the areas?
Correct, yeah, so when we were assessing the risks here, the three factors were the population density for the area, the threat source that's in the area, so, you know, we did look at this from an all-hazards perspective, so everything from rail to, you know, gas to flooding, all hazards approach. But realistically, when we're talking about getting people out of an area fast, it's usually because there's a contaminant, whether it's a gas or something that's in the environment, or fire, or potentially something that's in the air, as I said. So fuel source is definitely a big one that we looked at, and then also the eager potential of the area already. So does, is there more than one exit in and out of a subdivision? If there is, then it obviously minimizes the threat level to that particular area. I, obviously, the report is fairly lengthy, but, and I apologize for that, we did the best we could at trimming some of the material. I'd be happy to go through some of this report with council for the benefit of the public, or if council's happy with the report, they've seen it, if they want to field, answer any questions, or ask me any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Can we put this online or anything, or can we, or is it just a report for ourselves kind of thing?
It's a, it's a, I generated this as a report for information, so that council would have the benefit of this knowledge, I guess, going into budget discussions, and as we get into discussions on infrastructure services and what the priorities are and that kind of thing, just so that this would form part of the thought process, and it wouldn't be information that you wouldn't have, so.
Well, I think if we, once we read it like thoroughly, if we had any questions, I think we can bring them back, for sure. I think Counsel Swagger has a question right now, though.
Yeah, it's not so much a question, it's appreciation for that report, because I've got calls from folks at Crane Lake West, and, you know, they're concerned, because it is a really narrow little road, it's well documented in the report, so, and then the Reeves comments, no, I would agree, that this should be a report that kind of goes out there onto our website, so the residents can actually see what we're kind of working toward, and that we are, you know, concerned about some of these areas, and I think Counsel Faddeh mentioned Murray Lake, well, you know, we probably should add that in there somewhere. So I'll make a motion, but it's not just for information, because we have other options there, and I think I'd maybe make the motion, I mean, maybe ask for direction, but I think maybe motion two, because it says, prepare more fulsome financial plan to address mitigation strategies, because if we're going to budget this year, I guess my concern is, if it's just for information, nothing happens to it. We don't budget, we do nothing, right? And it could sit on the shelf, so I'd like to make the motion for option number two, where we actually kind of do maybe a, you know, further study, maybe add Murray Lake if we need to, and maybe there's other areas that you consider, but, you know, for budgeting purposes, so it doesn't sit on the shelf for another year.
Thank you, Counsel Swagger, through council. We can definitely do some of that testing, it's just, I mean, there's going to be a dollar value attached to any kind of, and I would lean heavily on infrastructure services to tell us what it is that we need to do as far as testing and that kind of thing. The other thing we'd need to discuss is whether we want to do that kind of preparation for all of these areas, or if there's any particular ones that we would like to focus, at least initially, some of our time on. Like Crane Lake, I know that's a concern for the residents there, it's been communicated evidently to me, so.
Well, again, I will go with option two, I'll make that motion, but you've kind of highlighted the ones that I think you think that we should work on initially, so, I mean, I'd say, I'll make a motion for number two, but.
Well, okay, let's, yeah, let's have a little more discussion before, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Deputy Reeve.
Thank you, thank you, Reeve, and thank you to Mr. Gandolfi for the report. I do agree with Mr. Gandolfi that we would probably need some more discussion about which areas of the report that we want to action, so I guess my suggestion would be to bring it back to a committee of the whole, we can kind of go over there and discuss kind of which areas we wanted action, and then make a recommendation to council.
Yeah, so, yeah, go ahead, Counsel Slipchuck.
Yeah, I'm just curious, like you mentioned, you looked at all places, did you look at Bercha State's north of Murray Lake, because I know on the north side of Bercha State's, there's a lot of military cabins on the north side, and I've never been there, but you can see it off the water. I was just curious if you guys had looked at that, and what their evacuation would look like if required.
Thank you for the question, Counsel Slipchuck, through the Reeve. We overflew the entire MD using Munisight and Google Earth, just to sort of get a read on exactly what we were looking at, so it took some time to actually do that. And again, some of the strategies that have already been adopted, so in other words, if it has two ways in, two ways out, it probably didn't make our top five list, I don't know if that particular subdivision has another way out, or if it's just a single road in, but we did overfly the entire MD, and these were the ones that we came up with that were most problematic. Now, that being said, if there is something that was missed, I've got no, I'm not so proud that I can't accept some suggestions.
Excuse me, excuse me, you good with that, Donnie?
Yeah, thank you for that, but, because I was thinking of Chicken Hill Lake, we got Minnie Lake, like we all got a lot of places with just one road in, so I just would like to make sure if we're doing this for the safety, that we look at all, all areas.
So again, through Counsel Slipchuck to the Reeve, we did look at Minnie Lake, we did, we acknowledged that there's one road in, and sort of one road out of there, too. The other factor, too, was how many of the houses are occupied year-round, how many of them are summer cottages that are vacant for the most part. And the other thing, too, that I haven't mentioned yet is open spaces, if there's large open spaces nearby where people, you know, in the event of an oncoming wildfire, as an example, they can congregate, and maybe they can't get out of the area by road, but maybe they can get to a certain clearing or something.
Well, there's farmland all around that lake, so.
Right, so in some cases, too, where we look at whether there's places for aircraft to land, or things like that, or even cut lines or things nearby, so there was, we looked at everything, really, and if there was enough mitigating factors for an area, then it was excluded into the second phase of this analysis.
All right. I believe Counsel Faddeh, no?
Yeah, thanks for that, I'm glad you did look at it, and you did a Google navigation on it. Again, the problems with Murray Lake, which I'm sure we'll get in your second report, is that we see more and more permanent residents out there versus just your cabin dwellers that are coming in from different places, so it's getting occupied yearly, and it's just, yeah, every time I talk to somebody, they're moving out there permanently after they've, you know, let's call it a vacation home, they're moving out there permanently. Now, they're empty nesters, they don't need the big space in Coal Lake or in Bonneville, and they are moving out there on a permanent basis, so just looking forward to your second report.
I think Murray Lake, for the council's benefit, Murray Lake was, you know, number five, it was right there, it just about made the list, but due to the fact that we'd been in there recently with some mitigation strategies already.
Right.
I think that's really the only reason it didn't make the main list.
When it's winter time, it's fine, you just walk onto the lake, right?
I suppose.
But, yeah, there's not too many other options. Okay, thank you.
Well, Murray Lake, you know it's coming, because if it is a fire, it's coming, more likely it's coming from the east, just like Crane Lake, that's the advantage of having, you could evacuate, even the Moose Lake here on 660, you know a fire's coming, at least you can evacuate, it's, but, and it's pretty close, but.
As long as people listen, right? I mean, as long as things were, I know when the fires happened in Slave Lake, everybody thought, it's not going to be here, right? And next thing you know, it's, you're being consumed by fire.
Well, it looks like extensive, extensive report, and thank you for that, and I think we need, like Deputy Reeve Crick said, and I think that was all in our minds, that we need to look at it at a committee of the whole before we make any kind of a motion to go forward, because there has to be a lot of discussion on something like that before we make a, but I do agree with you, too, Counsel Swagger, we should just put it on the shelf, just take a good look at it, yeah, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reeve, I'll have it added to the committee of the whole.
Okay, appreciate that.
So Mr. Reeve will recall my motion, then?
Yeah, if we could just get a motion directing administration to bring it back for the October 15 meeting?
Okay, can you make that motion, then?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Swagger, for making this motion, that council directs administration to bring the subdivision egress report back to October 15, 2024, committee of the whole meeting for further discussion. Any other discussion on this, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. On to 9.2.2.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. The Bonneville Regional Fire Authority has historically conducted annual pump testing on their fire apparatus to ensure their pumps fall within acceptable parameters. Should a pump fail to perform adequately during a deployment, it could pose exposed property, the public, and emergency responders to risk. The budget line where pump testing is funded contained $52,500 for 2024, and this budget line is used to service all MD-owned BRFA vehicles throughout the year, including repairs and routine maintenance. During the 2023 pump testing cycle, two pumps were identified as needing repairs, but the service provider was unable to carry out those repairs in 2023, so they were instead carried out in January of 2024. These unexpected pump repairs cost $18,261 and $21,963, respectively, for a total of These unexpected repairs have strained this year's budget to the point where pump testing for 2024 can't be carried out without going further over budget. The BRFA has advised that they need an additional, now this number may be changing, as early as yesterday, I had a meeting with our fire chief, our acting fire chief, and she may have new numbers on this for us, so, in fact, she will, so this has to be taken with a grain of salt, but in any case, the BRFA has advised they need an additional sum of money this year just to complete the pump testing for 2024. The budget line currently has no funds available and is overdrawn approximately $3,500 due to these unforeseen pump repairs. The BRFA maintains that although biannual pump testing is carried out in other jurisdictions, the best practice is for the pumps to be tested annually. This ties in with enhancing safety in the community, and this information's being presented to council simply for information at this point, indicating that we may need to come back to council and explain why we're a little bit over budget in this regard.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion? Yeah, Counsel Faddeh?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, and just also just let people know, when they see a pump failure, it fails in the parameters that it was set at, not, the pump doesn't just fail.
It's not failed, it's just not quite pumping, is.
Yeah, because I know we had that discussion a couple of years ago, I had some concerns from residents, and when I asked the fire chief at the time, he said, no, it doesn't fail, doesn't fail, just fails, like within those parameters that they're looking for, so.
It's still pumps.
Yeah, it's still pumps, just let people know that, it's.
It's not quite as good as brand new.
It's not a fire safety.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, that's true, but if it doesn't meet the parameters, then the word is failure.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Even though it works, but not as well.
Correct, so it's missing that, but I just want to let you know, because I know it's, when people hear failure, they, I get a couple of calls.
All right, thank you, Counsel Faddeh, for making the motion, that council accepts the regional fire authority requests for additional pump test funding report as information. Any discussion on this motion? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that's carried, on to 9.2.3. Maybe after you're done this one, Louis, you can read us entirety of the 9.2.1.
The entirety of it?
I think I would appreciate that myself.
Speed reader. Yeah, lots of pictures? I'll be good with that, then, it'll be a good book for Barry.
Good morning, council.
Morning, Matt.
So Administration is presenting to council the Environmental Protective Services Department quarterly report for quarter two, for the months of April, May, June. So first, we'll start with agricultural services.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, council.
Morning.
Today, I'll be presenting the second quarter report for agricultural services. We are pleased to announce that the beaver reduction and blasting services have been successful this year. So far, we have received 245 beaver tails for our beaver reduction program, compared to 203 tails at the same time last year. We are pleased to announce that the beaver reduction and blasting services have been successful this year. So far, we have received two hundred and forty-five beaver tails for our beaver reduction program compared to two hundred and three tails at the same time last year. Additionally, we have internally trapped twenty-four beavers to help protect our roadways. During our rat control program, we inspected a total of five hundred and eighty-five sites in range one and distributed three hundred and thirteen bags of warfarin and forty-eight bags of Ramex. There have been updates to our protocols for dispensing of the rat bait. Moving forward, only properties classified as farms will be eligible for bait distribution during our inspections. Acreage owners will only qualify for bait if a rat infestation has been identified. We'll now proceed on to our roadside mowing program. Our low, our large mowers have mowed approximately five hundred and ninety miles of right of ways this year, including the Iron Horse Trail. Our subdivision mowers have been progressing well. All hamlets, the M D welcome signs, the greater shops, the Public Works yard have all been mowed once. Approximately forty-three of the residential subdivision have been mowed so far. Our fence line clearing program continues to be busy again this year. We have paid out twelve thousand, five hundred so far, and with an additional twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty booked to be done later in the year. Our weed inspections began in May of this year, starting with industrial areas and then moving on to our pub, our public and private lands. So far, we have completed five hundred and thirty-nine inspections. We are currently in year three of our four-year rotation on the roadside spraying, and we've already sprayed approximately twenty-two kilometers of roadside. Additionally, we have been focusing on spraying fence lines to prevent weeds from encroaching onto croplands, and we have sprayed six point four kilometers of fence lines to date. Our rental units have been very busy this year with seven, ninety-seven rentals for a total of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty in revenue. On June seventeenth, we held an A S B meeting with, uh, delegation from Alberta Ag and Irrigation, providing us an update from the province. During the meeting, the board reviewed the pest control policy and the developed road allowance vegetation procedure. These items will be presented to council along with recommendations in the near future. Our V S I program has, has showed three hundred and eighty-seven claims for a total of fifty-seven, fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-six, forty-four for the first half of the year. We're up just a little over four thousand from two thousand and twenty-three. Of the ninety-seven hundred trees made available for sale this year in our shelter belt program, sixty-three hundred of them were purchased by M D residents. The re, the remaining trees were planted at the tree farm in Lakori and distributed to other departments for their use. An update for the Bonneville seed cleaning plant recorded cleaning, the cleaning numbers as follows. Uh, eight thousand, eighty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four bushels of weed have been cleaned, forty thousand, four hundred and four bushels of barley, fifty-seven thousand and five bushels of oats, seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four bushels of peas, and they also separated six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three bushels of canola. This will conclude my report. Uh, I welcome any questions.
Yeah, Counselor Fideev and then Counselor Swager.
Thank you. So in regards to uh, beaver, I guess nuisance, uh, so what is the process for somebody to go through? Do they just call your office, uh, and just kind of go through the stages of helping them out?
Okay, through the reef to, to Counselor Fideev. Um, a couple of years ago, we changed our, our beaver control policy, and we've made it very friendly to our residents. Um, if they have problems, we send out a pest control officer to identify the problem, give recommendations on how to solve the problem, and then we also have a beaver reduction payment in place for them, uh, for the tails they bring in.
Awesome. And they would just, just get ahold of you and.
Yes, just call our office. The eggs are filled in.
Thank you. I suggested a barbecue, but they weren't too keen on that, so.
Well, we're chewing on the beaver there. We could listen to his report. Swager.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. So the question about, uh, we don't, we're rat-free in Alberta, so we kind of, you know, we brag about it. Uh, but you had to distribute rat poison to, so that we actually are seeing rats though, is we're seeing rats. So that's why you're giving out rat poison is?
Through the reef to Counselor Swager. Um, what we have done is we patrol the border along the Saskatchewan border. We're really proud of our rat control program. Um, in the past, historically, uh, each time we visited a site, we handed out mouse bait, and it was just, it was placed at every farm at, at no charge, and it was provided through the government. Um, there's been some, some changes in their regulation, and, uh, rats only are more likely to land on a farm than an acreage because there will be animal feed and they need some source of, of, uh, nutrition. Acreages generally have a couple of dogs and a little bit of dog food, not, not a lot of feed, so, uh, just to protect the safety of the neighbors' close dogs and children and stuff like that, they've changed the regulations so that it'll only go to farmers.
Okay, no, I, I just, I guess I really wasn't aware that, uh, I thought they would just come to you if there was a rat problem, but you're saying you actually distribute it and they, they sort of as a preemptive thing, they put it out anyway, just if there are rats? Is that, yeah, okay.
Correct, correct. Historically, we've just put bait out, and if they came across, they probably were going to get into the bait. Um, that has changed, and we do, as per our agreement with Alberta Ag, we do inspections of over five hundred properties twice a year, and we look for signs of rats. Any resident out there that suspects they have a rat or have, uh, markings of a rat, they call us and we go right away to check it out.
Okay, now I just had one, one more comment, and I like, I like the stats for the seed cleaning plant, but because I'm, I'm not a, you know, a farmer or renter, I, I really don't know what the stats mean as compared to previous year, so I, I don't know. It's, m- maybe it's a pain in, in your butt for me to ask you that, but that's nice for this year, but it'd be kind of nice if it was kind of like a couple of year period and then I, you know, and then it looks like, wow, okay, now it means something.
Correct.
Cause you could have said, uh, you know, a bazillion bushels, it wouldn't have meant anything to me, cause I don't know, but.
Historically, it makes sense.
For sure. I totally understand that, and, uh, just from my knowledge of bushels, we are on par as last year, but absolutely I can put, we're starting to compare the year after year after year on our reports.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your report. Appreciate it.
Hello again, council. Uh, just reporting on behalf of, uh, public safety. Quarterly report includes April to June of two thousand and twenty-four. So the public safety department, uh, conducted various infrastructure patrols. Um, one patrol out to Kennesaw, greater shops were patrolled five times, fire halls were nine, campgrounds twenty-three, community halls twenty-five, landfills thirty-nine, and then bin sites forty-three. In partnership with C N R L, Baytex, and Ovis, and Imperial Oil, we also delivered patrol services to their well sites and service roads. In the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-four, we delivered three hundred and forty-nine hours of patrol services to our industry partners on a fee-for-service basis. Additionally, our peace officers focus on commercial vehicles. Uh, during the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-four, M D peace officers conducted twelve commercial vehicle inspections, resulting in three vehicles being temporarily put out of service. In this quarter, eleven warnings and ten tickets were issued for various safety offenses, nine of which were cargo securment related. Cargo securment seems to be, um, ongoing theme and also the mechanical fitness of certain pieces of equipment, trailers and things like that. Uh, ticket counts for year by the second quarter, so in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, and two thousand and twenty-four, um, you can see on this slide, um, just the, the changes, I guess. Bylaw tickets, uh, were at seven this year in, in that quarter. We wrote, uh, a hundred and forty-four warnings, three hundred and fifteen provincial tickets, for a total of four hundred and sixty-six contacts, uh, with the public. Um, there's a total of seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in tickets written this quarter as well.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question on that before we get too far. The, the amount, the total for the tickets written, does that go, go to the M D or to the province, or where does that money actually end up?
So, um, the tickets written that are provincial, so if it's a provincial charge, um, it does come back to the M D, so it's based on where it's geographically written. So if it's written in the M D territory, if you will, then it'll come back to the M D minus the surcharge that the, uh, province, uh, applies to the fine.
And what percentage approximately would the surcharge be?
It's somewhere around between thirty-five and forty-five percent. I don't know exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, just to expand on that, two bylaw tickets are different. Bylaw tickets, when we issue them, if they come to the front counter and pay, then the full hundred percent comes back to the M D and fine revenue. Uh, concerning, uh, locations in Ward One, uh, three hundred and forty-seven hours patrolled in Ward Two, seventy-four, sixty-five in Ward Three, and Ward Four, two twenty-nine, two twelve, twenty-eight. Again, these are all computer generated based on G P S, um, data. And the, uh, calls for service primarily, uh, again, in this quarter, uh, looks like dog and livestock was quite high. It was fifty-four calls in two thousand and twenty-four between April and June. Uh, debris on the highway, we've got quite a few calls, two, five. Joint force operations, we did seven. Uh, it's quite a nice number compared to years past. Rural crime prevention, we're still working on trying to get our SEP Ted program kind of reinvigorated here, working with the R C M P on that and trying to get them to, uh, help us, uh, connect with some of their victims of property crime in the M D so that we can conduct SEP Ted checks for them, so we're working on expanding that as best we can. Uh, we attended three community events as well. I think that number's a little lean, but I'll have to talk to our guys about, uh, making sure they write up files when they go to community events because I'm quite certain we've had more than that. Illegal dumping of waste, uh, traffic complaints, and then you can see the other reported files. So our, uh, reported files are kind of in in line, if you would, with, uh, two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, and less so with two thousand and twenty-three. Our file count, uh, jumped up a little bit last year, or this year, excuse me. And then during this quarter, the main focus, uh, was, uh, speed, motorcycle safety, and commercial vehicle safety. Uh, additionally, there were fifteen assistance rendered files. We attended four motor vehicle collisions, uh, to assist, uh, B R F A and, uh, police. There were five incidents that failed to stop for a peace officer. That's when somebody just runs from one of our people that are trying to stop them. And then, of course, our folks don't pursue them, but, uh, there's still quite a bit of that that happens unfortunately. Uh, one issued, uh, ticket issued for driving while unauthorized, and that usually comes with a vehicle seizure as well, a thirty-day seizure in some cases. Uh, there were three summons issued for speeding. Uh, the highest speed was a hundred and thirty-eight in an eighty zone, so that's fifty-eight over the speed limit, automatic court appearance. Uh, and also three, uh, tickets issued for having vehicles on the road without insurance. Any questions?
Yes, Counselor Fideev?
Yeah, good morning. Um, still kind of looking at the numbers in Cherry Grove and the visits, and they're still quite soft. And, uh, in regards to, uh, we have a water vessel inspection on Highway fifty-five from the province, and, uh, they're, uh, they're having concerns about, uh, where they're placed. There's people using Cherry Ridge Road before the actual station. They just, they go north or they go in and around. So a lot of the, uh, a lot of the boats aren't being inspected coming from, from, from Saskatchewan. Uh, the, so, so the mussels have been, uh, I guess, uh, seen as, as close as, as Meadow Lake Provincial Park, which is really, really close. So, uh, I'm, I have, I have serious concerns about our, our waterways, uh, as it is, and never mind adding this, this, this new element that could, uh, cause more issues for us. Uh, so, you know, my, my question to you is, uh, is there a way we can do some sort of joint collaboration as far as helping, helping them out, uh, on Cherry Ridge Road where the people just turn, turn, turn north? Uh, and, uh, is there a way for maybe, you know, in, in your conversation with them, to have a conversation with the province and maybe helping out with some of the funds that it would take? But those numbers would definitely, uh, increase to Cherry Grove, and then again, from Cherry Grove, uh, Ridge Road coming from the north to the south, that, uh, it, it comes from our waste department going down. Nobody's doing fifty kilometers. I keep getting complaints and, uh, you know, so not only those are recorded or people just getting annoyed with them and just, uh, leaving them be, right? Yeah, so it's just, uh, those are concerns that I'm just addressing.
Thank you, Counselor Swager.
Yeah, so Counselor Fideev made, made the good point, and I, I, we have, uh, M L As here here too, so the mussels is ma, it's a major issue, and I, I've been to other countries where you look and like, their water intakes and they're like, they're just, they're clogged. Like they're, these mussels are destroying millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of infrastructure, and, and we have a chance to stop them as we do with rats coming into Alberta, but like Counselor Fideev said, they're, these people just, they know where that station is, where they're supposed to pull over and have their boats inspected, and they bypass it. And the other, the other thing is, unfortunately, it's a really important program, but they only, those people are only there seasonally, and they're not twenty-four hours a day. They're only there from what, is it like six till five or something?
Yeah, they put some, like some long hours in, but, and they try to get it in within that, uh, the sweet time of everybody traveling, and it's usually come, uh, fall, where everybody's, uh, taking their boats out of, out of the cabins. That is the big issue. There's, they're spending a lot of time there, and they did, uh, one time a drive-by, they must have had seven people there, right? So they're, they're, they're on, but they're at the station. They're not.
No, but, but I get it, but if these people, as they're coming through, like I, I think when I, when I was there, they're, they shut down at six, five or six in the afternoon, so.
I think come to the time, it's a little, a little later, but not much, not much, because they know everybody's leaving, but, uh, like, like during the summer, they're, their hours are, are quite a bit short.
So, Mr. Reeve, I guess I'm just wondering, uh, you know, do we, um, maybe, do we need a motion to have this council write a letter to, you know, our M L A and whoever and say, you know, can we look at it a bit more seriously? I mean, I, I mean, it's just not just our area. It's all over Alberta, but you, you'd hate to have it, if they came into our lakes, we, it would just be devastating, but.
Yeah, it's, and, you know, I mean, I mean, the fines have gone up, uh, and, you know, they're up to, you know, I think, I think they're forty-five hundred dollars for an inspection that, that's failed, or people, or people try to avoid it, but with, uh, with the dog sniffing, uh, dog sniffing, no, sniffing dogs.
Mussels.
For mussels.
Sniffing dogs.
Uh, we went from, uh, from three dogs, active dogs, two one. Uh, that dog is, you know, not here. It is down south where you got your, your main corridors, uh, you know, like will be Highway One. That dog was, uh, was, was, was crucial, and, uh, and so, I mean, you know, even though the province, you know, says that, that their fines are going up, but yet the resources going into that program are, are quite a bit less, and they're lacking.
So, Mr. Reeve, so the, our M L A is here, does he nod, nod at least that he acknowledges that we're talking about this? I'm not sure.
When, when he comes up, we can spend five minutes and talk to him when he comes up. He's, if I know him, he's already written, wrote it down, so.
He's making notes. He's making notes. I'll see that. So my, my, my question though for Louis was, um, you know, it's just a bylaws enforcement one, but I know bylaws are, are complaint driven, but, uh, when I'm walking, uh, the, you know, the nice sidewalks in Ardmore, and you have, you have to walk around somebody's yard because the trees are so, you know, they're, they're so thick grown out onto the sidewalk, you can't walk down the sidewalk? Is, is that still complaint driven, or, like, do you want me to sort of put in complaints for all those spots?
Well, uh, through the chair, excuse me, um, through the reef, I would say no. If it's, uh, if you've got some foliage that's encroaching onto the sidewalk, it's kind of bordering on a safety issue. People are going to have to trip or lose their footing or that kind of thing. So no, I would not, uh, I would not include that in a complaints-driven process. I think that's uh, something that we can look out for, just like we do with, uh, with, uh, you know, sidewalks that require snow removal and things like that. So I would classify that the same way. I can, uh, I'd be happy to have that conversation with our, our group at our next staff meeting as well.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slipchuk.
Yeah, in regards to the mussels and, uh, bolt inspections, uh, comments there. Maybe we need a bigger, better educational program going out there, cause. all, you can have all kinds of inspections, like, uh, people are gonna bypass it, but I think maybe we gotta educate the public more, maybe through our, even our web, M D website or whatever to protect our lakes and just get it out there more, just like we do with texting and driving.
Yes, Counselor Fedev, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think the province has been doing a fairly good job of it. But it's just, you know, and I'm, I'm not saying these people are doing it intentionally. It's just, they just don't think that where their boat is at, that is, uh, it's a concern and just, you know. I mean, it's just a, it's a five-minute stop. It's just, they quickly rinse it, wash it, off they go. But I mean, my, my concerns were, it's in Meadow Lake Provincial Park. It's like, it's right there. So, yeah.
So, yeah, Counselor Fedev, when you were there with them for a while, how many, how many spottings did they, like, did they give you any kind of statistics or anything?
Not really spotting, but they're, uh, when they were there, uh, saw all these mussels. They're, they're pretty micro, like they're super small.
Are they?
Uh, so, so when they're there, they just give your, uh, your boat a rinse or your canoe, they just hose it off and off you go. This way they know that whatever's there might get knocked off and.
Right.
That's it. So, yeah, it's pretty good.
Thank you for that. Any other, uh, questions for Mr. Kundolphi on this? Well, thank you. Are you quite, you're not quite done then?
Uh, no, I, I'm finished, yeah.
Okay. Because that report's gonna take about half an hour, you know? Thank you. Next. Do we have time? How long is yours?
Quick.
Quick? All right. We'll take it then.
Good morning, Council.
Looking pretty sharp too. Boy, your wife must've dressed you this morning, I'll tell you.
I'm here to present the second quarter report for the Waste Services Department. Starting off, here's a list of the landfill visitors to each of the sites during the second quarter. Ardmore, which is now open Tuesday through Saturday, saw two thousand three hundred and one visits, down forty-one point two percent from quarter two last year. This can be explained by the new automated gates being in operation this year during quarter two as opposed to last year. Good Ridge, which is open Friday and Sunday, saw three hundred and sixty-three visits, up two point five percent from quarter two last year. Hilda Lake, which is open Wednesday, Saturday and Sunday, saw one thousand and fifty visits, which is down twenty-seven point three percent from quarter two last year. This is likely explained by the opening of the Riverhurst bin site, which happened at the end of June in twenty-twenty-three. Lacory, which is open Tuesday through Saturday, saw one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six visits, down fourteen percent from quarter two last year. Muriel Lake, which is open Wednesday and Sunday, saw four hundred visits, up nine point six percent from quarter two of last year. And Thirion, which is open Monday, Thursday and Saturday, saw one thousand eighty-two visits, up six point seven percent from quarter two last year. With the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission, regular waste hauling has been altered since the compactor trailer broke down over the Christmas week, uh, in twenty-twenty-three and is still awaiting repairs. As such, we have been hauling all waste collected on weekdays to the Bonneville and Cold Lake transfer stations and have only been using our trans stores on Sundays and statutory holidays. The reason for this is the haul contractor can only empty our trans stores with one of the open-top walking floor trailers, which are owned by the Waste Commission. And without a compactor on that trailer, it can only haul eleven to twelve tons of waste instead of the twenty-three or twenty-four tons, um, the compactor trailer normally hauls. Financially, this means it is currently more economical to haul our waste to the Bonneville and Cold Lake transport stations with our own front-load garbage trucks. As a result of the change in operation for the time being, we hauled eighteen extra waste bins out to the landfills for residents to use for their waste drop-off instead of the trans stores. The trailer is projected to be back in operation in quarter one of twenty-twenty-five. The automated gate system at the Ardmore landfill has been in operation for nine months as of this, end of the second quarter and is serving its purpose well. Most people that visit the site are registered users with a no-cost-to-them-waste utility account. As of June thirtieth, we had registered fourteen hundred proximity cards and four hundred smartphone apps, accounts for the site. The Cold Lake Waste, uh, Cold Lake landfill waste account has been well-received with both M D residents as well as the City of Cold Lake landfill staff. As of June thirtieth, two hundred and forty accounts had been registered to use for the landfill for dropping off their household waste, which was up thirty over the first half of twenty-twenty-four. In December of twenty-twenty-three, we registered for the Extended Producer Responsibility Program with the Alberta Recycling Management Authority. This program will help compensate municipalities for the collection and recycling of plastic, paper and packaging materials, which includes glass and tin cans. The program is scheduled to begin April first, twenty-twenty-five for municipalities who registered last fall. And this does include the City of Cold Lake and the town of Bonneville, which is important for us to maintain our cycling operations. The Waste Operations Study final report was received from Tetra Tech in quarter two, and the hundred and sixteen-page report gave us feedback on our operations. It highlighted processes we are doing well, noted things we can improve upon and gave us recommendations on what we can work towards in the future for our waste services operation. With the twenty-twenty-four Alberta Care Fall Conference scheduled to be hosted by the M D of Bonneville in September, we had begun and completed much of the planning to host the hundred-plus pro, projected attendees for tours of M D landfills and Kinnisoo Ridge. This conference took place a couple of weeks ago and we've, and we received a lot of great feedback on our sites and our operations. Operations landfill staff have continued with site inspections of our bin sites and landfills on a minimum quarterly basis. We strive to complete these monthly to help ensure our sites are safe and effective for staff and residents. The roadside cleanup program took place in quarter two with twenty-one groups cleaning three hundred and eight kilometers of M D roadways. For their efforts, they received a total of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. Two seasonal staff were hired and trained this spring. They started in April and May respectively and were excellent additions to the crew. Also in quarter two, we received concerns regarding bears getting into waste bins at multiple bin sites. At Beaver Dam in Muriel South, residents had left the bear-proof lids open. At North Shore Heights and Riverhurst, dumpster divers had made messes. And at Muriel Viewpoint, where we only had plastic lids on the bins, we brought in new bear-proof bins to help keep the bears out. Rounding out quarter two, in June, the model development's bin site surface inside the fence compound was reconstructed with recycled asphalt. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? Yes, Counselor Fedev.
Uh, good morning. Uh, Mr. Olin, in regards to the Ardmore, uh, uh, site. So we went from thirty-nine, fourteen to twenty-three hundred. You think the, uh, the amount of visitors were because of the gates? And because the council had some questions before, that's why we went with the gates. Do you think that drop is because of that?
Through the reef, Counselor Fedev, uh, yes, I think a, a large part of that was, was because now, um, we're requiring M D residents use only. So they need a waste utility account, so they need to be, uh, taxpayers to the M D of Bonneville. And also we did change the days of operations, so, um, to Tuesday, to Saturday now.
Right. So what kind of life extension is that gonna, uh, help us for our, our sites?
Through the reef, um, it'll be a significant, uh, improvement or, you know, um, lifespan extension of our, of our landfill sites. When we, uh, can eliminate waste coming from outside the M D, um, that goes into our landfill cells, then obviously we're going to extend the lifespan of our, of ourselves.
Yes, Counselor Slipchuk.
Yeah, I just want to ask about the, because we, the talent currently got a metal, uh, guy that buys scrap metal and everything. So are we seeing a reduction in our metal being at our waste disposal sites? And I imagine we used to sell it before as well, right? So I imagine we're seeing a loss in revenue on that end.
Through the reef to Counselor Slipchuk, so, um, our metal recyclers just came around. They just completed their cleanup two weeks ago. So we haven't seen what those numbers look like. Historically, the numbers, the, the volumes of metals do vary from year to year. We did receive some revenue last year. We received, I believe, it was eleven thousand dollars in revenue, um, last year. But that also is, is very largely dependent on the metal markets. So as for our, um, metal recycling contract, when the, when the price of, of general scrap metal gets below a certain point, we won't receive a rebate. But when it is above, then we do, we do see some rebate of that material, so.
Yeah, I'm just curious to see if we all noticed and once, since you got them all cleaned up, if we noticed a difference in, uh, what we're, you're, we're receiving now, because I, I, I think we're gonna see a big reduction in metal coming to our waste disposal sites now.
Yeah, through the reef, I would, I would, I imagine there, there's, um, less volumes. Like I said, the, uh, the collections vary too. So they, they do a milk run around northeastern Alberta, right? So some years they get to our sites twice during the year. Some years it's, it's, you know, they miss, just depending on the schedule. But I can, uh, maybe have a more detailed report on that next time.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion that council accepts the Environmental Protective Services twenty-twenty-four second quarterly report as information.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Fedev, for making this motion. That council accepts Environmental Protective Services two thousand twenty-four second quarterly report as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. We're gonna take a five-minute recess before we start on the delegations. That is carried. Thank you. Hey, welcome back. Uh, we're, have delegations at this time and we're starting with the Dupree Community League.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counsel.
Morning.
I'm Rachel Stromacki. This is Carmen Corbeal. We are two of the four members, active members of the Dupree Community. So we are here today requesting that the M D take over the grounds upkeep and general maintenance. Because there's only four active members. No one is interested anymore in Dupree in being a part of anything that we do there. Um, I've been the president, this is, I think, my fourth year. While I've been president, I've tried, we've all tried to get more members active and bringing in more, like, we tried a flea mark, flea market about two years ago, three years ago now. It was successful. The first year we did it and the next year, nothing.
It was three years ago.
It was three years ago.
We also, again, tried this year and there was nothing.
So back in two thousand and five, uh, when Carmen and Glenn and my husband, Chris Stromacki, were part of the community, when they started doing this, they went in and they fixed up the grounds, like the ball diamonds. They got it all, like, it's beautiful. Our grounds are beautiful. Um, we have two ball diamonds. We have the playground and then we have ten, uh, camping stalls, which are full hookups, full service. We can't seem to get anybody to use the site other than ball tournaments, which are, we had one this year. So now it won't be used again for another.
Another year.
Another year.
But the ball, the ball itself, whether it be slow pitch modification, teams two, fourteen, that's left.
And as far as the grounds maintenance, it's myself, uh, my husband and my daughter who cut the grass. And then Glenn Corbeal, Carmen's husband, he does also grass cutting, but he does the, um, like, we, looking after the weeds and everything else. And for the ball tournament, he looks after all that. But we are not able to get any new members. Honestly, we're, we're tired of it. We're, we're fed up. We don't know what to do anymore. We don't know how to bring people in. We have new families who have moved into Dupree area. They're not interested. We can't even get their kids to cut the grass. I mean, we pay well. We pay fifty dollars an hour for grass cutting. And we can't get anybody to do it, so we're doing it ourselves. And it's very time-consuming. Um, so basically, we're, we're at the point where we're, we're done. We can't do it anymore.
We're asking if the M D could take over the maintenance of the.
And what you're taking over, what you would be taking over is relatively, I mean, everything's done. It's beautiful. It's a matter of cutting the grass, um, maybe doing a little, what do you call it, weed, uh, extraction, whatever.
Whipping.
Weed whacking, yeah, things like that. Like, it's, it's very simple to do. It's just too time-consuming for us when it's just us doing it, like the four of us.
So, yeah, we're requesting that you put it in rotation of, uh, your other ground maintenance, whether it be campground.
And we know that, um, the M D, like, you got the grounds, people, the recreation, wherever, for, for grass, they do come out and they do cut the grass around the dumpsters. We know they're coming out for that already. And realistically, I mean, they're coming out there for maybe half an hour. So they're already there. They could do everything else, is what we're thinking.
Okay, yeah. Counselor Fedev.
Sorry. Some of us have hearing aids, uh, but it's good. Uh, so, yeah, no, thanks for that. I mean, I, you know, thank you for, uh, for putting in all the time you guys have put in. Tough, tough place to be, so, uh, I'll, I'll definitely take this as, you know, as information and we'll try to figure out what's, uh, best for the community. But, yeah, thanks for your time, like you guys did.
Yeah, go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, I appreciate that also, because it is a struggle. I mean, I, I was on the Ardmore Community Board for years and years and, and it's, it's always hard, right? So, you know, it's too bad you had to come to this, but I, so I'll ask though, uh, uh, you have, because you've got a board, or at least you, in principle, you did have, did you apply for the five thou, it was five thousand that you were given every year, so?
I was gonna mention, we have put the application already because it was due last week, so we did put that in.
Okay, and then so, um, I mean, I don't know if I have to ask anything else, but, uh, I, you know, I guess the council could consider that, like, you're saying, well, don't give us five thousand, but do the, do the work in kind sort of thing, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Crick.
Yeah, just thanks for coming in and, and we hear what you're saying. Kind of the way we do things around here normally is we get our administration to bring back a report to us when, when requests like this comes. So I'll make the motion that we, uh, accept it as information and direct administration to bring back a report and, and we can go from there.
One second, ladies. Yeah, we have a motion that Deputy Reeve Crick makes this motion that council accepts the presentation by Dupree Community League as information, furthermore directs administration to bring the request for the ground maintenance to support in place of community operating grant to future meeting of council for consideration. Any discussion? Yeah, I, I have discussion. It's not like we're taking over a dump. I played at that ball diamond this year and it's pristine, so they, I have to share what these three shared and I'm sure the rest of us think. It's an amazing job you guys do there for four people. Uh, it's
Thank you.
Very well done. And I think you even cut hay on the other side of the road.
Uh, not us, but.
No?
Uh, our neighbors do.
Okay, I thought you were cutting. You were, you were cutting hay there this year, I'm sure of it.
Yes, I was.
Yeah. All right. I think I'm getting my directions all screwed up here. Anyway, thank you for, uh, so I'm gonna call for the vote now. Yes, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very nice ball diamond there and I played many games there and I hit many home runs over the fence too, so, thank you.
People are not supposed to lie on, on, we're on, we're on line here. No, he has. They had aluminum bats back then. Thank you, ladies. I'll call for the vote now. That's carried. Thank you. That was a joke, Mike. I tried hard this year and I, I was like, uh, not even close. Onto the Village of Glendon, Public Library Board.
Good morning, Reeve and Council.
Morning.
Uh, my name is Carla Peyton. I am the manager of the Glendon Public Library. And, uh, I am here on behalf of the, the board, um, to ask for funding. Noreen Cotton sends her apologies. She had some changes in circumstances and wasn't able to be here today. So she did send, um, a note or a letter with me that I would like to read to you. And then, uh, we can go on from there. Good morning, Reeve and Council. Thank you once again for granting us the opportunity to speak to you today and showcase what our library has been up to this past year and what our plans and aspirations are for the future. I apologize that I'm unable to attend this morning. She, I am in Edson looking after our, our grandchildren while their parents are away. They are in the States right now where our. They are in the States right now where our son-in-law is undergoing critical surgery on his spine. She thought it was important for you guys to know that it wasn't just a choice of, she didn't have time to come. If you have questions of the board that Carla isn't able to answer at this time, I will be certain to follow up to ensure those questions are answered to your satisfaction. First and foremost, we would like to express our appreciation for the support you have given us so far. With your support, we were able to have a successful grand opening and successful launch of our public library. Transitioning a school library to a public library is no easy feat. It has taken a lot of work, both from the board and, of course, the library staff, who have been putting in a tremendous amount of work. Carla has developed a very informative PowerPoint that we, she will present this morning. I think you will find it very interesting, especially when she highlights some of the statistics. After the PowerPoint presentation, Carla can read the information I've included about our 2025 budget and our financial request for the 2025 fiscal year. Start. The Glendon Public Library has now been open to the public since January of this year, and even though we're still in the infant stage of this endeavor, we've, we're already seen a big impact on our community. Our goal is to provide equitable access to resources for all our community and surrounding community members. Our numbers have grown from twenty to thirty patrons in January and February to two hundred and fifty in September. This number increases weekly. We also know that out of those two hundred and fifty patrons, a hundred and ninety-nine of them have Glendon addresses, the rest have addresses of the surrounding area, from the MD, from St. Paul, and on. When comparing our new registrations with surrounding area libraries, we're on par for the size of our population. In September alone, we have had over a hundred and fifty items checked out from our library, and that number will increase significantly over the next few months with school in session. So, of those two hundred and fifty registrations, only our elementary students are included in that, which would be around that eighty-nine students. So, a good number of them are community members that are not in school. Slideshow working? Oh, okay. So, we've gone through the patron register. So, circulation, these are numbers of items that have been taken out and renewed from our library. So, residents in the Bonneville Municipal District have checked out three hundred and eighty-two items with fourteen renewals. The town of Bonneville, we've only had one check out. Glendon Village, three hundred and eighty-eight and fifty-seven renewals. St. Paul County, ninety-six checkouts with twelve renewals. St. Paul, three checkouts. So, our totals are eight hundred and seventy-four and eighty-three renewals. What we currently offer, we have storytime with our daycare groups twice a month, sometimes three times a month. They come in, we read a story with them, they do some activities with us. It really goes a long way to showing those littles what it is like to be in school and what the expectations are when they finally start coming to school. They love the fact that they're allowed to take books home, and we're building readers every day by doing this. They also learn that we're not just about quiet reading. We're about activities, we're about learning, we're about teaching. And our community members are making frequent excursions into the library on a daily basis. They come in while our students are in there. They interact with our students. It's really building that knowledge with our students, that those people are welcome. So, if I have a community member in, I always make sure my students greet them and welcome them so that they learn that that's the appropriate thing to do. We held a ping-pong tournament in our library. People think that's crazy, but my shelves are all movable. We moved them all to one end, and we had four ping-pong tables set up in the library, and the people that come had a blast. Not normally people that you would find in our library, but they came, they played, they had a look at things, and they were really impressed with what we're doing there. We had community members come in for Mother's Day craft and a Father's Day craft with their families. Yeah, we're getting a lot of people in and out for the activities that we're doing. For our students, they're learning that the public library makes lives easier. They're accessing things that they didn't even know they had access to. Things that we can't offer as a school, but as a public library, we can offer to them. They're coming in to study, they're using our Solero program, which is a web-based study program. When test times come up, junior high, senior high students, we're getting tons more in the library than we had in the past. So, just knowing that those, those things are available are really impressive to them. Our junior high members are working with seniors on technology hurdles, things that they might not know how to do. We just recently got a book in the library called Windows for, or iPads for Dummies. The kids love it, and we're working on that technology base with our seniors that might not know how to book a book online or anything like that. Children, we have movie activity, movie afternoons after school. We also do storytime with a craft in the afternoons after school on certain days and board game nights. So far this year, we have had, we have started an adult book club. We've had a horticulturist come in from La Clebiche to do a gardening session in May that was well-attended. We've had chunky knit blanket-making classes that are always full. So, we're working with the community to do stuff like that. We're currently working with employabilities out of Bonneville. They are gonna come into our library in November and work with members of the community that are unemployed and are having a hard time finding jobs. They will help do job searches, write resumes, complete online education, applications, you know, those things that help build successful people. And we plan to work with many more groups and organizations in our area and the surrounding area. So, we're really trying to build relationships with all of the groups in our community. At the Progie Festival this year, we gathered all the groups together and got everybody to set up a booth with an incentive for community members to go visit all of those people. They got a stamp, they had a chance to win a prize. So, we're doing things like that, just in the hopes of bringing people together. Yeah, so that's our slideshow. Now...
I just have a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I see you have a very nice picture of the board three councilor there, and I just want to ask you, we have the ping-pong tournament there, my memory, I don't remember. Can you tell us who won the seniors' ping-pong tournament there, the adult?
Through the reef, I knew where that was going.
Oh.
Councilor Kravjak.
Give him a hand. And I heard he even played backwards, so he gave the other people a chance.
He may have, he may have. Yeah, I knew that was going right away. Okay. So, on to our budget. I believe you have a copy of it there in front of you. So, when we originally put in our request for this meeting, we had requested twenty-five thousand dollars. After looking at our budget and what the village is able to contribute, we decided that it wasn't fair of us to ask for more than what they are able to give to us. So, we have brought that down to twenty thousand. Now, the board has prepared the 2025 budget, which includes a financial request of thirteen thousand, as well as that ten percent of the Rural Services Grant that the MD receives each other each year for public libraries. So, our ask is the thirteen thousand from the board, and then seven thousand seventy-four dollars and fourteen cents, that would be the ten percent of the Rural Services Grant. That make sense? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Swiger.
Yeah, I'm not sure about all the finances stuff, so I just ask you, so, you are part of the Northern Lights Library System now, right?
Yep, through the reef, we are.
And so, I don't see a revenue, is, okay, so what do you mean by Rural Services Grant? Was that Northern Lights Library System grant?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then the, and then the thirteen thousand, well, the other thing I'll ask you, you have a kind of total revenue of fifty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five? I don't see the, I don't see the expenditure total is, is there a total there somewhere? It's just a bunch of numbers, but they're not added anywhere. Like, you have, you have revenue coming in, then you have expenses. Should I add all those up myself, or, do you know what I'm saying? Am I missing a page or something, or?
No.
There's no expenses listed, though. What am I missing?
Okay, so, this is for our projected, what we will spend in 2025.
No, I guess I don't, sorry, I guess I'm missing something, so I'll let somebody else ask.
Through the reef to Councilor Swiger, I think I can answer that one. It just looks, it appears as though when each expenditure comes off, the balance is the remaining amount of that fifty-nine thousand that's in the budget, and it works right down to zero at the end.
On the right-hand side, it works down to zero at the end.
Okay, does it? Because, okay, well, I guess I'll have to take your word for it. Okay, so as long as you're happy that the fifty-nine, three, three, five, point one four balances with your expenditures, right? Or am I...
Yep, yeah. In, in our furthest right-hand column there?
Yep.
We have taken that fifty-nine thousand and subtracted those expenditures. So, we end up potentially at the end of the year with a balance of zero.
First column is expenses, the second is balance from the fifty-nine.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, if you see the fifty-nine thousand, three, thirty-five, fourteen?
Yep.
And then the first item that it's taken off of there is thirteen thousand, so now there's a balance of forty-six thousand, three, thirty-five.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so the next item is twenty-five thousand, so you have a balance of twenty-one, three, thirty-five. So, it keeps going down till you get zero from the fifty-nine thousand, that's presented.
Okay, no, appreciate that, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. That's why we have Mr. Math over there. Well, actually, we have two Mr. Maths over here. As long as we got one of something. All right, well, any other question? Yeah, Councilor Fedeah?
Yeah, good morning. So, your ask is just additional thirteen thousand dollars from the MD?
Through the reef, that's correct.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it.
So, you need a motion, Mr. Reeve?
Uh, yeah, I guess we do, yeah.
So, I'll make the motions for number one. Or it was...
Yeah, the one that's there. Thank you, Councilor Kravjak, for making a motion and for winning that ping-pong tournament for seniors. That council accepts this presentation by the Village of Glendon Public Library Board as information, and furthermore directs administration to bring the request for funding support to a future meeting of council for consideration. Any discussion on this?
No, I just brought that up because I thought it was a very vital piece of information that you missed, so, thank you.
I'm gonna call for the vote now. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's not eleven, are we gonna make them wait? No. All right, Mr. M. Lee, come on up.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, Reeve, Council. Thank you so much for seeing me today. I really am just following up with a commitment that I've made to the council when I first was elected, saying that I would like to visit you guys more every three to six months. This is one of those, those, I guess, interactions where we can sit and talk about some of the concerns that the council's got. Clearly, hearing about zebra mussels and rats are important before the council. These are day-to-day things you're dealing with, and it's important that I'm in these meetings hearing some of those concerns. To deal with the zebra mussels and the quagga mussels, I guess, really, the province has been taking that very, very seriously. What happens is, is that we've actually put forward an advertising campaign that just happened on August first with two phases. It's important to mention that we've gotten out in billboards as well as graphic presentations throughout the province, just to let people know. And we also created a new, a new task force for actually looking at this now. Whether or not we can explore having that task for us up here, I think that, for the most part, our southern border seems to be the one we're guarding the most right now, but that doesn't mean that there couldn't be something coming in from Saskatchewan. So, point well-taken, and I will make sure that I pass that on. Right now, our province is a hundred percent free of zebra mussels and quagga mussels, so we want to keep it that way. And I do wanna really reinforce that, that when these things come forward, I'm glad to hear that the council is looking to, hey, you know what, let's reach out to Scott, hear what he's got to say, maybe there's something that we can be moving forward in our area. So, does that help answer some of your questions from the, from Councilor Swiger?
I just, I gotta quit. How small are these things, like?
Yeah, so when, when it gets down to detection, that's why the dogs were so important. A lot of times, it was invisible by the eye.
So, the dogs could sniff them?
The dogs could sniff them out, and that's kind of what, you know, they were doing the big, you know, the big rave about the, about the dogs is because they do, you know, they do sniff them out. And that's just, you know, I guess that's the catalyst of, once they come into, then they just grow and they're, as you know, they're gone. So, a lot of it was, you know, like, the big, the bigger boats that were brought in from Ontario, from the, you know, from the big lakes.
Yeah.
But a lot of the stuff, like, say, when I, when you hear that our neighbors have it, it's, it's something, I think, yeah.
Just that comment, though, yeah, so don't misinterpret what he said, because they're invisible to the eye when they're first tiny, but then they grow, they grow good size, and I think, like, the size of your thumbnail or something, like, they're, they're, you know, you can see them easily. They crawl under water lines and pipelines and they just, they just plug them solid.
Okay, thank you. Hi, just looking for some questions, because I think we have some, or do you have a little bit of a presentation?
I'm open, no, I, I'm open to the will of the council, so...
All right. Josh is ready to roll here, I think.
But I would like to touch on rural crime before we're done with this.
Okay, perfect. That's, that was my first question. And it was in regards to our policing costs. So, currently, the MD pays approximately one point six million dollars in policing costs, and it just seems like the cops, I don't want to say, I mean, if they're watching, I just want to say, if they're watching the YouTube, I want to say thank you for all the service that you do, but it seems like their hands are tied and they, it's a catch-and-release system and it's not working, and we're paying quite a bit of money for it and not getting the service. So, as a province, I would hope that the province is doing whatever is possible to, and I know the RCMP is a federal, but the policing costs are provincial, so that seems to be a bit of a, quite a big problem. And that's all I'm gonna say. I'll let you speak, and then I'll have another question later on.
So, clearly, rural crime is an issue throughout our entire constituency, not just the M D of Bonneville. This is a challenge that all of our municipalities are facing right now. But I will tell you that it seems like it's, it seems to be more the M D that is taking a proactive role, and I'm very thankful for that. Matter of fact, the M D, through my office and the city of Cold Lake, have felt it so much, they wanted to have that meeting with the Minister of Justice, Minister Amory, to get some commitments on direction of where we're going, specifically about maybe definitions around the peace officers and what they can do. I know that the Reeve has asked me to follow up on that, and I will be following up with some of those conversations that the minister had had last year. But there is other things that we're working on right now beyond just law enforcement. Now, again, I, we did that Chamber of Commerce, what is it, the joint municipalities, or sorry, joint municipal leaders or provincial leaders? We had M P Stubbs, M P Goodridge, myself, the Reeve. We had Mayor Barasso and Mayor Copeland all on stage. And when we were talking about the rural crime, it was pretty clear for everybody there that everybody's frustrated with where the federal government is going, including the M Ps. So, you're not wrong. We're all hoping to see some change at the federal level, and maybe we can start seeing some people being held accountable for some of the things. Because one of the things that I will say is, we arrest them, and they just get let go. The catch-and-release system, like you were mentioning before. I can, I can, what we've got here, then, is what can we do as a provincial level? And I think that's your next part of your question. So, if we can't deal with this at a federal level right now, what is the province doing? Recently, I had the Minister of Mental Health come out because many of the people that are dealing with this is dealing with addiction issues. And what happens is, it's important that we start to more or less look at breaking that cycle where they're being put into, or being arrested, and then being released. It's time that we start looking at putting them through a program that can break that cycle and maybe take some of the homeless off of the streets. The next one is, is that we actually had Minister Amory announce, a historic announcement for Alberta, actually, up here in St. Paul. And that's the restorative justice court that we had created there with Justice Ladisour. That's First Nations, holding First Nations accountable for crimes. That's actually something that hasn't been tried before. And I'm gonna tell you, it's nice to see that we're getting some real buy-in from our First Nations and our M T from the region as well, because they're dealing with this crime wave as much as we are here. And it's important that what happens is, is that if they can help break some of the cycles that some of their peoples are going through as well, that also is a step forward. So, this is the first time it's been tried in Canada, this restorative justice. It's called the Healing to Wellness Court, so I'm looking forward to seeing where that one goes. We also have Minister Amory, not Minister, Minister Ellis, who has started to empower sheriffs more, and I'm sure you've seen more of that. And what they've been doing is targeting problem areas, and we're definitely got to be one of those, because we're high on the Crime and Security Index. So, what it does is, it looks to target the drug houses and all that kind of stuff and shutting those down. And they've had some success in both Edmonton and Calgary, so they've been focusing on there for now. But I will tell you that maybe getting some of those sheriff units, especially units out for rural, especially our area, is something I'd like to see. So, Minister Amory is very aware that I'd love to see some of those sheriff units starting to actually pursue some of these chop shops and drug houses in our own area. And I do have faith in our local R C N P or peace officers. What happens is, is that I feel their frustration. I really do. I know they're putting the work and effort into getting these individuals charged, and then to see these charges just being more or less thrown out by the courts, that's got to be one of the most frustrating things. A good example would be, is if you guys wanted to start making bylaws and have the bylaw system shut down right in front of you, just as you're ready to pass a bylaw. Unfortunately, what happens is, is that motivation to actually move forward with municipal concerns would be eroded because of that. So, I am a big advocate of making sure that when it comes to our police forces, that we need to be showing our support for them. Because I will tell you that when it comes down to it, I know that they're putting their lives at risk for us, and I'm very thankful for that. We also, we also had the Children and Family Services Minister up here. So, this is not just, this is not just about law enforcement. It's also about the families that are being affected by this. So, that one, too, is something that we need to make sure the Minister of Child, sorry, the Minister of Children and Family Services is also being a part of. We've got women shelters at both Cold Lake and St. Paul that are up, and I'm gonna say that when it comes to our children's service units, we're also knowing that they're working hard through this process as well. Because it's not just the victims of these criminals, it's also the families and everybody that's involved with this, too. We also are restructuring the victim service units throughout Alberta. So, that one there, I'm hoping to see, that was just an announcement yesterday. It comes down to the fact that we are taking a lot of movement forward to try to solve this at a provincial level. But clearly, it's not gonna be solved overnight. Really, some of these individuals just need to be thrown in jail for long periods of time. And until we get a more friendly government that really stands up for its citizens, I don't see this happening in the near future. Talked a lot.
Thank you. On that same note, yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, thanks for that. So, in regards to the, our policing costs, that has changed quite a few years ago because we went from a... So, we went to a, an assessment-based cost. And that was pushed by a lot of the urbans that, you know, here you got a quote-unquote, a neighbor that has a lot more, a lot more money coming in, so that was, that was change of that. I mean, there's a lot of our municipality that is in the bombing range, where there's zero policing up there, but yet we're still paying the costs for that. And I think that's very, should be looked at, should be looked at, you know, seriously. And, yeah, it's just, and the rotating doors, I'm glad you guys are trying to work on that, so, but, for sure. Thanks.
Sir, thank you for that, and I know that that was brought up to the minister directly by the Reeve himself. So, this is the fact that using assessment values seems to be a very poor model to figuring out what it, what you should be delivering on. So, the minister is very aware, but I can follow up to see, along with the, an update of where the police, peace officers and theirs roles are, I can actually follow up with the minister as well on how we're implementing that model, so.
Thank you. I'll go to Counselor Kravijak, then Counselor Swiger?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, my comment was the same as Counselor Fadiev, was that the assessment model has changed to assessment model. And of course, the urbans don't have much assessment. It's the rural M Ds and counties that have a lot of assessments. So, now the burden for paying for policing falls on us as opposed to the urbans like it was before. So, that model should be changed back. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, so, thanks for that, Mr. Reeve. Premier Smith had made some comments about drug treatment because it's, so all the rural crime, most of it is related to drug usage. And so, can you talk a little bit about what she proposes? And is it provincial, or does it still have to be a federal thing where you catch these guys, they go to the court system, and then they have to go into forced treatment for a year or two or whatever, till they're, you know, cured or whatever? So, can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. This is actually one of the things that Minister Williams is working on right now. What happens is, is that the mandatory treatment, recovery treatment, is what you're talking about for those that are currently in it, really don't have the capacity to make decisions for themselves. If you've seen any of these people that are on fentanyl or on meth, what happens is, is that they really don't have the capacity to make decisions. The problem is, is that I believe that everybody here believes in freedoms. So, we have to balance this very, very carefully, making sure we're not going in and just forcing a person that's had a few drinks overnight to, into some sort of recovery system where the point is, is that we need to make sure that we get that balance correct. And that's what we're working through right now. I'm told that we're looking at probably having something in the fall, for the fall session, on dealing with this. There's gonna be some sort of committee where they would go in, and we can actually start to submit people in that we see that for our local communities have become problematic, and then working through what that system is. So, we need the recovery centers to be in place so that they can admit. We need detox ready, we need the transitional housing, and we need the recovery centers. And then we also need the transitional housing after the recovery center. This is actually going with a different model. The model that we've currently got is about a twenty-eight to forty-two day model for rehab. I'm told that that success rate is in the mid-teens. So, that one there probably is not the success rate we're hoping for. But a longer-term recovery program would be it. So, what the intent is, is transitional housing, go to detox, go to recovery, then from the recovery, back into a transitional housing, which is probably about a two-year stay through that whole thing. So, you can see that we're very committed to making sure these individuals get the help they need. And when it comes down to it, for us in the Northeast, I would hope that we continue to push for that recovery center up in our area. Now, we did have that announcement of a recovery center over at Smoky Lake, which is exciting, but I don't believe that's still pretty far from us. And when you look at the state that St. Paul and Cold Lake is dealing with the homeless right now, that's affecting all of us. So, we do need solutions, and we're working through them right now, so.
Thank you. Counselor Slipchik, then Counselor Fadiev.
Yeah, I know this crime is getting out of hand here in our area. I'm getting reports from, complaints from all kinds of residents every just about three to four times a week. And I know just the other day, Scott Kodevich, his neighbor there, about three thirty in the morning here in town, got their truck broken into, they tried to steal it, but alarm system went off, scared them off. It's getting out of hand. So, you say these recovery programs and everything, but if we get to the point one day where these people are held responsible for their actions, they gotta, you do the crime, you pay the time? Are we gonna have the room to put these, do we have infrastructure available to put these people incarcerated and make them get treatments? Or is that gonna be the next issue where we don't have the room?
So, clearly, when it comes to, from memory serves, we haven't had a federal-provincial prison built in a lot of years. So, this is something that the ministry's gonna have to look at, especially on the federal level. My hope is, is that the federal conservatives, should they form government, that this probably would be one of their priorities. But having said that, I do believe that there's two types of criminals. I'm sure that the law enforcement would disagree with me, and they would go with, there's probably fifty different types of criminals. But there's your opportunity criminal, who is that one that's on meth or fentanyl that is trying to feed an addiction, and they're going out every day and stealing small things. And then you've got those organized crime ones, where they're coming into your property with full trailers, ready to go, and they've got a plan on getting that stuff out of your home, over a border, and in a way of selling that. So, I think we need to be looking at two different approaches. The recovery report approach needs to be the one used for those homeless or those addicts. And the other one needs to be those people that are loading up trailers at your house. They need to be thrown away in jail for a long, long time. So, filling my jails up with homeless people probably is not the route to go. That doesn't mean I don't want to hold them accountable for the crimes they're committing. But I will say that really, the solution here is to make sure that they're given every opportunity to recover before we throw them in jail. Did that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Just one comment and just another question. So, comment is, in regards to recovery, it's not a, it's a voluntary recovery. It's not a forced recovery, right? And so, I think, you know, they wanted to do that. When I speak to a lot of the, some people call them homeless, I call them addicts, lost souls, they're not homeless. They, you know, they like their way of lifestyle. They do like it, so that's just a comment. But so, my question is, you know, what is being done in regards to people that are frequent flyers? There are a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty charges. And if you've heard this before, it's coming from, you know, my business community, which is Cold Lake. There's, you know, a couple individuals that are a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty charges, but yet when they go in front of the judge, the judge picks their side and almost implicates that they're brought there because they're being picked on. That is totally unfair to the business community, especially with all the other issues they have to deal with.
Yes, and thank you for that. I also, if you remember, my background is being an accountant. I lived and breathed this with my local businesses, as in my role as working as an accountant. The frustrations, the lack of being able to get insurance anymore, like, there's a lot of issues that go along with the fact that we're not holding people accountable for decisions they're making. The fact that our courts have decided that releasing them is a service to the public, I don't agree with that. And I would say that you're seeing that frustration throughout the world because you're seeing world governments changing over the fact that these progressive values, if you will, have been up and working for societies, which is, I think, too, is you're gonna see that Canada is actually going to be shifting over the fact that the liberals have been toying with safe supply, which is that giving addicts drugs, because that has been working very, very horribly, and not locking people up for the crimes they're committing. So, people aren't feeling safe in their communities. So, I believe that that's gonna be the number one on the next federal election, number one thing that needs to be dealt with.
Yeah, so, just, yeah, sorry to interrupt. So, my question is, what steps are you guys taking forward to try to eliminate the judge's, I guess, demeanor to it? Because, I mean, that's just, you know, when somebody has, it's not as if it's four charges, a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty. And so, again, you know, I'm just, you know, what is the province doing to mitigate that?
So, again, we have different responsibilities when it comes to your government versus your judicial. The fact is, is I don't, myself nor the premier has no ability, or the Minister of Justice has no ability to tell a judge what to do. What I can say is, is that we are looking to appoint provincial judges that have a more demeanor where they're looking at crimes committed against. I can, there's no doubt that that needs to happen. But the federally appointed judges, we have no authority over either. What I will say is, is that I know that Minister Amory's been looking on a tracking feature of how do we start to embarrass these judges, if you will, for decisions that they're continuing doing. That might be a tool that we could use. But right now, as it sits, I know people just want me to either start locking people up, just walking around myself and saying, that guy needs to be locked up, or going into the prisons, and this is the other thing, just release that guy, he's innocent. I don't think we want any politician out there with those kind of authorities. So, I do sympathize with some of the decisions that the judges do have, though. To get to, sorry, I can't remember which counselor that said we don't have enough jails. That one there is a real reality. If the judge has nowhere to put somebody, the judge may want to actually convict somebody of a crime. But in the end, if they have to choose between a murderer and a person that is breaking into businesses, clearly, it's gonna be a hard decision that the judge is gonna have to make. But you're not wrong. We do need to be looking at, do we have the capacity? We need to be able to enforce the crimes that are happening, so.
Counselor Swiger, then Counselor Slipchik.
I'm gonna just ask you the same question I almost just asked you, but the forced drug treatment, I think that's, the forced drug treatment is maybe a good solution for a lot of these guys who are on, you know, are on drugs. But, so what's stopping the province from doing that? Is it federal government? Like, is it, can we regulate that, or can we do that, or why, why aren't we doing it?
Okay, so first things first is we're taking people's rights and freedoms away, so...
Well, no, I get that, but what's physically stopping us from going through with this? Because you can talk about this, you'll be talking about this in ten years, saying the same thing, but...
No, no, we're looking at bringing legislation in the ball.
Okay, so that's my question, so you can... Okay, so that's my question. So you can actually bring provincial legislation to do this?
We are doing that, but the problem is, is that ha- that legislation has to be locked tight. We have a Supreme Court that has not been um, holding criminals to account for their crimes. So we need to be making sure that when we put this legislation forward, we know it's gonna get challenged all the way up to the Supreme Court. So when we're crafting this, it has to be perfect. And I know that the premier and the Minister Amory is, is trying to put every eventuality in place to make sure that we don't, our legislation doesn't get, go under, because then if it does, then it gets that much harder to bring in legislation that, that they may accept. So, so we are working on it. I know that they're, that, that, that uh, if it was just easy into saying, hey, we'll just change a regulation, suddenly we could just do it. But it isn't that, that easy when we're ta- we're literally taking people's right, rights and freedoms away. This is, this is a concern. No.
So this, this is gonna happen this, this fall, you think?
That's uh, that's what I've been told, uh, is on our agenda for the fall. So, and this is where the Minister of Mental Health, this is where he, he's working with the Minister of Justice and the premier's office to make sure that this happens. And the premier's been saying this has been coming. So uh, the, the issue is, is that uh, when we, when we're doing this, we have to make sure the right tre- checks and balances are in place. Now, having said that, you're even having the B C uh, N D P right now exploring uh, forced uh, recovery. So that shows you how, how horrific it's working over there. So we're ahead of the game. They're actually following our lead, uh, the rest of the provinces. They're looking at what we're doing. We're actually leaders in this. So um, I will give credit where credit is due.
Yeah, so one, one more. You, you talked about the, I think you talked about the scan program, Safe Communities and Neighborhoods. So the R C M P have had that for many years. But you mentioned Edmonton and Calgary, because we don't get it here. And I, I, you know, I'm looking at a guy that's actually sitting in the gallery here that, you know, has had that concern that they know exactly where this drug house is or whatever. But, you know, the R C M P, they know about it, they may drive by once in a while, but they won't come and do these scan, you know, programs in our area. We're, because we're not Edmonton or Calgary or Red Deer or Luffbridge maybe, but, so I don't know. I mean, that's, you know, it's not, it, I mean, I suppose you could bring that up with somebody, but I don't know if you'd have the answer for that.
Well, again, when it comes to ensuring that our communities are safe from, from these dealers and, and, and drug houses. Um, I'm open, if there is houses of concern within your wards, by all means, um, send an email off to my, my uh, my office and I will, will send it over to Minister Ellis. To say, can you have your sheriffs uh, take a look at this? What process is there that we have to follow to be able to make that happen? Um, but you're not wrong. I wanna see these, these uh, these officers that we've been, and again, I, I understand their, Minister Ellis is, is, is starting something new, something that's very focused. Um, so they're, they're focusing right now in Edmonton and Calgary. We do need to, to acknowledge that rural has got a problem too. So I'd love to see that. So if you, if the counselors here, if somebody or a house in their area that's, seems to be problematic, send it over to my office and I'll shoot it up.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slipchuk.
Yeah, so Counselor Fadil mentioned about these repeat offenders, or he's heard where there are a hundred and forty offenses, a hundred and sixty offenses. I think it's starting to show an effect in the community where um, they're getting braver now. Where we just had last week a farmer at seven in the morning, he came in, stole trailer, truck, quads. It took him nine minutes. They're, they're coming into daylight broadly. They're not scared now. And there's, they live right near to the property. And they, I, why can't provincial government put legislation in to these judges then? If they see they, they got multiple crimes, why aren't they held liable if something happens then?
So, so to be clear though, that the, the ones that likely have those multiple convictions aren't the guys that are pulling up to your house with, with trucks and trailers. It's the homeless or your, your vagrants or whatever it is you wanna call them that have got those, 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 those great number of charges.
I'll have to agree with you on that, because a couple of years ago, we had a neighbor north of us that had multiple charges. And he wasn't locked up till he started shooting back at them.
And, no, but I'm, I'm not saying that's the, that's uh, that I'm an expert for sure in all of this, but I am saying that I, I do believe there's two paths we need to explore when it comes to the different levels of crime. Those ones showing up at farmhouse that are very organized, they belong in jail. They belong in jail. And until we start to start throwing these individuals in jail for the crimes they're doing, it's going to be uh, some, some definite um, um, concerns. Now, this isn't new. We were, in my first term from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, we were still, even back then, dealing with the level of crime. And it's, it's unfortunate that the, the, the first thing that the federal liberals did was they loosened all the rules. And it, it's just snowballed to the point where we're at today, where there's zero accountability, uh, it, it appears by our courts.
And a big concern of mine is uh, innocent resident, they're, they're just fed up already, and we're, they're gonna end up getting in trouble, because they're just tired of it. And I, I just don't wanna see that. I hope we move fast on this and fix this.
So, so for those, for those, for those community members, I've been encouraging them to, to write my office, not form letters, um, because they'll get a forum response back. What I'd like is a, what is happening with them. There's, and then I will shoot that to Minister Ellis, so that he's got something he can bring to the R C M P. So this is a tool that I've been using and, and making sure they understand the level of frustration in my area. And the, and the lack of, the lack of, of any responsibility the courts are taking for, for the fact that, that they're really the ones that are driving a lot of this, and the federal liberals. And again, I wait to see where the federal conservatives go, because I, I don't know if they can fix that overnight, because it's gonna be, it's been nine years, ten years that they'll have uh, had this system and done what they've done to it.
I'm just sure that our people are tired of writing letters.
Yeah.
You know, it's just um, it should be the old way here or something. I'm not gonna say what I'm thinking here, but.
Please, yeah, please don't do the other way.
Yeah, because this has got a, this has got to end. Like, we've been fighting this for years and, and people are a hundred and forty some charges, the guy. That's, that's, that's just retarded. I apologize for that. That's just unacceptable. Yeah.
And, and, and I, and I believe that almost everybody, well, in, probably everybody in this room would agree with you, Reeve. This is unacceptable. We need to.
Well, we're talking about all the people on it. It's how about all the people selling it?
Yeah.
Like, it's, what are we doing about those people that are selling it to these people and getting them addicted to this garbage? Yeah. It's just.
Yeah, Reeve, just, just, just kinda last comment to you, just in regards to the, you know, rights and freedoms, right? I mean, is when somebody else's rights and freedoms are, are, are really bringing that burden onto us, right? So I, I, I'm trying, I'm trying to conduct safe place for my workers, uh, you know, for my family. And when you can't do that, when your, when your, when your welding truck gets, gets stolen twice, now you have no way of supporting your family over and over again. I think those, those rights and freedoms should, you know, should be trumped over top of a criminal that's been out there over and over again. But again, just uh, I know there's nothing to get down about it, but those are, those are the frustrating issues.
So, so, uh, so counselor, uh, what I will say is that when I'm mandatory, putting somebody into mandatory recovery, that's where I'm talking about rights and freedoms. I have to be very careful with going down.
There's countries right now that are doing it, and they've, they've done an excellent job of it. We're just not, we're just not there.
I, and I, and I agree that we, we do need to be moving this forward, but I also don't want to put something forward. I know it's gonna be struck down by the Supreme Court. So I know we're, we're on top of this, we're, we're gonna be moving forward. Um, when it comes to a criminal, uh, they have their rights and freedoms um, um, taken from them. Once a jury or a judge makes that determination. So.
It's, yeah, it's just, it's a frustrating top, topic. I've, I've, we've done this years ago. The last council done this. It's just, it never ends. And it's been years. It just never ends. Like, uh, when is our governments gonna step up and do something? I don't know. You know, people, we're, we're with the people all the time, so we're the government that are with all the people all the time, the, your, your neighbors and uh, they're, and we get it, we get all the slack. But we're the ones that can do the least about it. That's the problem. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
I know, I know we mentioned that we're hoping for a federal cha- federal government change. We can't wait for that. We gotta get going in our own province, get this stuff straightened out, because who knows what could happen next election.
And, and again, I, I'm not disputing that uh, a federal change or even a, a appetite change should the federal liberals get another, another election in. Um, but uh, we are moving forward with, with uh, let's say that uh, that um, um, restorative justice court. Again, the fact that the minister acknowledges that we have, uh, the First Nations have to be a, a component of fixing some of the concerns that are coming forward with their people. That I, I think is a huge, a huge deal. And he's more than willing to, to, to work with, with the First Nations and the Metis to try to, to make sure that, that they're breaking cycles that potentially some of their people are going through right now. So, but uh, yeah, no. Uh, overall though, outside of that, um, you know, it's, it's, it's been, uh, it's been good. I actually spent a lot of time with the council here on the site selector. Um, I will, I will give kudos to the council when it comes to the fact that uh, it's important that we're bringing people internationally into our area to showcase what we have to offer. And I got to spend some time with Counselor uh, Swager, Fadu, Crick and uh, yourself, sir, uh, Slipchuk. And uh, what happens here is, is that by, by, by showcasing our area and what we have to offer, it's, it's one of those remarkable things. So the fact that the M D council is, is actively trying to make sure that, that they're marketing yourselves, this is good. I got to spend the Saturday, um, and get to see the sites, see some of the, the uh, the subdivisions that are, that are up and ready to go. Uh, we also got to, to hear some of the, the uh, um, requirements for, for them to consider us to be good sites for, for uh, um, their investment, getting their investors into our area. Uh, it's meetings like that the last three days. We also had Parliamentary Secretary Shane Getson come up and speak before you guys, which was nice, because that's economic quarters. And Stan, he, he talked about having a, a, a uh, a uh, uh, really a, a discussion around having some sort of a superhighway going from north to south, all the way down to the United States. There's these things that our government is taking the lead on, but I will tell you, the M D is also taking the lead, making sure your, our region is, is, is seen as a, as a, as a, as a good place to put people's money. Um, I will know that, uh, know that uh, uh, hydrogen was the, the number one, I think, uh, uh, topic of choice there. And I do believe that we're a great opportunity for making sure that uh, maybe we can be the just, uh, the creator of hydrogen and, and getting it out to the rest of Alberta. So making sure that also is being heard. So we have so much to offer up here, and it's so good to see the M D is taking a leadership role in this. So thank you for that.
Yeah, that kinda leads me into my second question that I had there. Um, so in trying to get businesses to come and build in the M D of Onneville, we run into an issue with our safety codes. And I believe that's provincial, provincially regulated, where they're having to put like thousands of gallons, well, I don't know if thousands, but like, yeah, it is thousands of gallons, thousands of gallons of water underground. Just to be able to build a, a metal shop out for fire, so they have to bury thousands of gallons of water underground for fire protection for a metal building. Out of the M D, which is, it's making it very cost prohibitive for people to build on, on our lots that are developed and ready to go. So if, if there's any way you can look into uh, to that, that would sure be appreciated.
Well, I will say that uh, um, again, when it comes to um, um, safety code, there is a federal one and then your provincial one also usually aligns with your federal safety code. Sometimes they deviate.
So just on that note though, like, we currently have a federal government that we, we have to, have no choice to align with. But if we have a choice in this, if the province has a choice to not align with stuff that's ridiculous from the federal government, we should go our own way.
Yeah. And, and I will say that the Minister of Municipal Affairs is very aware. It's your hangers that you have a problem with right now. Is that correct?
Yeah, hangers, and we're building a fire hall in Cherry Grove, so even for a fire hall, apparently we have to have a huge tank of water underground, case the, or above ground. But if, it just, it's cost prohibitive to spend two hundred thousand dollars on a, on a, to have a massive tank of water underground or above ground.
So I will commit to following up with a letter to Municipal Affairs with this as well, as a.
Thank you.
Counsel, okay with that?
Yeah, thanks. So just kinda to give you an idea, our, I think our square footage is about sixty-five hundred square feet for the fire hall, and we need roughly around, uh, Mr. Brazelko, ninety thousand? Yeah. Ninety-three thousand gallons of.
No liters.
liters. I think gallons sounds better.
Yes, let's call it gallons.
Of, of readiness of, of water being there. So uh, and, yeah, so.
So can I just, sorry, can I just add to that? Because a, a fire truck holds four thousand liters, four thousand liters, and then a tanker of eight thousand, but they're asking for ninety-six thousand. So that, you know, that water's gonna sit on that tank forever, because you're gonna, you're gonna suck off, you know, eight or ten thousand liters or whatever, but you still got eighty-six thousand. You know, it's just, it's beyond belief what they're asking for. Anyway, crazy.
So is it possible for you to send the details to my office? And then that way I can, I can uh, uh, send the exact concern you got over to Municipal Affairs?
Mr. Gindolf is giving a thumbs up.
Okay, I just, I'm not sure who you're looking at.
And, and just to put this furthermore into perspective, how ridiculous these requirements are, if we were to take the two, because I think six thousand square feet is maybe the, where, where the threshold for where you have to put the water tanks in. If we were to split those buildings and have like a thirty-five hundred square foot building and a three thousand square foot building, that were six feet apart or eight feet apart, then we don't have the requirement for the water. Unfortunately, we've, we've already tendered this building, so we can't, don't have that option anymore. But it's, it's cost prohibitive for business.
I think you can actually just put a firewall between the two buildings and it would be legal. It's just ridiculous.
So I will, I will commit bringing that to Minister MacGyver. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because this is something that, that will hurt economic development in rural communities.
But it's been in place for, I don't know why it's being, why it's being, uh, you know, why they're holding everyone accountable. It's been in place for how many years? Fifteen years or thirteen years or something? But I don't know why they're just putting the foot down on it now, right?
Well, again, if, if the, if there is, uh, we're, we're a bit, a business friendly or municipal friendly government. So if there is red tape or, or extra layered costs that are being added to these things, that uh, we can reasonably say that it isn't impacting seat, the safety, right? Because I don't think anybody wants unsafe buildings. But reasonably being able to put uh, mitigating uh, uh, safety features in place that'll, that'll still save people should there be a fire there. I think that is the, the key to all of this. So I'm hearing you loud and clear.
Yeah, thank you.
The codes are a problem, but it's also, this is the first time I'm hearing it about, about the fire hall. I was hearing about it from Cold Lake, as well as, as you guys, about the hangers. Those were the two, those were the two big ones saying, it doesn't make any sense for, for uh, a hanger having to have these massive fire suppression things in it.
So I can't, I can't imagine the size of a water thing for a hanger from the one, especially the size that they were telling us about. Incredible. Go ahead.
Just a comment. So I mean, you know, we totally get it if, if there was a six foot, you know, roof to roof and things like that, where it's fairly congested. But a lot of these, these lots that we're looking at are, you know, you know, two and five acre lots, and you have this building that's in the middle of it, with, you know, a neighbor being a hundred feet away, uh, from roof to roof. Uh, I think those things should be taken into consideration with the code.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
I gotta bring up, uh, you talked about the site link and it was an amazing, it was an amazing event, uh, but what I kinda, talking to some of the uh, the realtors and the economic development folks. Um, natural gas is really important. And so in the M D, and you're familiar with this, but we haven't, we haven't made any, I guess I'm saying we're, we're lacking natural gas for, for homes and businesses, and nothing's happening. And so there's, um, you know, what, what do we do? I, I guess I'd ask you to maybe start looking into that again. Uh, because these sites, some of these industrial sites, they're on propane and, and they should be on natural gas. We have a, an abundance of natural gas flowing through our municipality, but we can't get access to it.
So I, this was again, something that I was dealing with my first term from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen. Um, we had whole subdivisions that were being denied natural gas in my first term. Um, and um, they were saying that we'll, we'll do your, your farmhouse, but we'll not do, we're not gonna do your shop um, on the same property. So they had to have propane on one building and, and you, you can't make up how, how this isn't working. Um, I will, I will say that uh, that in the end, uh, Northeast Gas is, is a co-op. And um, uh, we do have some uh, uh, influence over them, but they are, they have got their own board and they make their own decisions on this. Unfortunately, it, it appears that they're not into expanding the lines like they need to, because it sounds like their lines are too small to sup- to supply the amount of gas that they need. Uh, if they're not uh, fulfilling the residents' uh, needs in, in this area, which it sounds like, um, is another, is a, has been an ongoing concern. Um, you can bet that I can bring this to uh, the Minister of Affordable Utilities, that's Minister Newdorff. Um, is the council fine with me bringing a, a letter forward saying that this is a, a real concern about Northeast Gas and they need to review that, that gas co-op?
A hundred percent. And I, I'd ask you to go look, you know, have them go look through, or somebody can look through the past histories, because we've met, we've been working on this since twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen.
Yeah, so, so the minister at the time was Matt Jones, and we did meet with him and uh, and all the information they have, things haven't changed a single bit. And, and with the tie-ins, uh, so the person that has the franchise, the sort of franchise that is, that's holding the, uh, the, the co-op. Uh, all we're saying is, you know, we don't wanna get rid of them at, in any way, but if they can't provide the service, find another person that can. find another person that can. Uh, and that's, that's all there is to it. So, so TC Energy, uh, we, like, when we talked to them, there was a bottleneck between,